Good evening and welcome to the June 14, 2021 work joint work session, Mayor and Council and Planning Commission. Tonight, we have one discussion topic, which is more a continuation from our conversation last week about the master plan update for Lake Forest Mall property. But before we do that, we need a motion to hold a closed executive session after this meeting. Council member, whoever wants to do the motion, it's on our agenda packet. Just it's it's on the packet as an announcement, just read it as a motion, please. Mike.
Mr. Mayor, I moved that we hold an executive session this evening. After the work session, the meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the annotated code of Maryland, section three dash three zero five B one I. The appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, disciplined, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. The topic to be discussed is a personnel matter to conduct the city attorney's annual review. That's my motion.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Okay, I'll call the role. All those in favor say aye, any opposed say nay. Council Vice President Sesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Spiegel.
Aye.
Councilmember Sales.
Aye.
And Councilmember Wu.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys. Carrie's unanimously. We will have that immediately after this meeting, and I will turn it over to John Schlichting and Rob Robinson and Sharon Disk to lead us through the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Planning Commission. I am John Schlichting, your Director of Planning and Code Administration, and this is a consolidated joint work session for MP 121 and MP 221, the Lake Forest Mall Master Plan and Associated Special Conditions. At the public hearing last Monday, staff compiled a list of five topics that warrant additional discussion and hopefully resolution this evening. And they are the 35% green space requirement and how it is applied, the 7% limit of townhouses in residential development, how the newly termed gap housing fits in the residential limits, the five acre total limit on solely retail uses, and the 30,000 square foot solely retail building footprint limit. Rob Robinson, backed up by Laura and Kirk, will tackle the first three, and Sharon backed up by Tom will handle four and five. We are indeed hopeful that our presentation and your discussions this evening will lead to final consensus on these topics prior to the Planning Commission's record closing on July 9. I will point out, however, that the state's land use article was changed in 2015, and the council now does have the ability to make changes after the Planning Commission's approval and recommendation on July 21. Any changes made at that point, however, would restart the public hearing process and go back to the Planning Commission for another approval and recommendation, pushing the council's adoption into late fall, early winter. Consequently, we do hope you reach consensus tonight, and we urge you to do so. With that, I will turn it over to Rob to start the presentation.
Thank you, John, and good evening, Mayor and members of the council and members of the commission. Chris, if we could start at packet page seven, please. Thank you. So once again, Lake Forest Mall, eight parcels, 102 acres, the area, the pond closest to 355 at the corner of 124 and 355 is eight acres. So we're really talking 94 acres in the core area, and minus those ponds, we're really talking about 86 acres of developable area. Next slide, please. So following up on the public hearing last week, we thought it was important before we go into these five things to sort of go over again, the overriding policy goals slash visions that we really talked about related to mixed use for Lake Forest Mall. And namely that there's an emphasis on green areas and open spaces, that residential is a important, is that important component, but not the primary driver of a redevelopment. Our goal really for this plan was to create density, not a bedroom community, and that residential should include new housing types that foster a variety of rental and ownership opportunities at various price points. This goes to the crux of our discussion related throughout this master plan about housing affordability. And lastly, that we want to include a broader spectrum of commercial uses than mainly retail that provide a diversity of wage scales and career growth opportunities. Next slide, please. So why is this important? Essentially, these three main components are all interrelated and interconnected. There's a synergy, each supports and contributes to the other. The city of Gaithersburg wants to create communities where you can live where you work. Well, you need the residential to bring in the commercial, but you need a commercial base that can actually afford wages that can pay for the residential. And both groups, you know, as we heard throughout the focus groups and everything else, one green area, you know, this is what makes an area attractive to do investment, both for housing and for commercial. And I think the important thing to note with this, as we just talked about, there's a finite area of redevelopment. If you begin to do an increase in one goal, you really are reducing the area available for another goal. And the special conditions in the caps discussed tonight was really staff's attempt to strive to find the correct balance amongst these three areas. Next slide, please. So to begin with, we're going to start with the green area. As written right now, the special condition reads establish an overall minimum of 35% green area as defined in the MXD zone for the entire 102 acre plan area. It was noted, and we fully agree, this really does not adequately address a phased fragmented redevelopment strategy. Next slide, please. So with our first graphic, so at 102 acres, basically 35.7 would be the green acre overall under, as the condition is written right now. But what that really means for the core area is 27.68 acres. And that was always intended to sort of be related to, you know, one complete vision. What really comes out of this is the issue is, the question that was posed to staff was, what if it's phased? What if there's a multi-ownership thing? Well, if each parcel came in at doing 35% by itself, you would end up with just in the core area, 32.9 acres. And then when you add in the pond, you'd be over almost at 41 acres. So you actually are creating more than 35% green space. So what we decided to do was sort of look at, so we keep it in mind, this 27.68. The way the code is written, it says green area, you know, can only count if it's on the same tract of land. So in an individual phased fragmented development scenario, you can't count the eight acres of the pond area up by Maryland 124 and Maryland 355. So you're really looking at the core area. So what is the percentage that gets to that? And what we found was 30% of the green area would equate to a total of 28.2 acres of green area in the core. So we're really only talking about a half acre difference between 35 across the board with one with one plan or individual plans coming in separately. And both of these would essentially translate to 11 acres of park space overall, which was really the goal with the balance, again, being on private lots or in right of ways, things along those lines. Next slide, please. So with that, what we're really proposing is to revise the special condition. And for the first part, for a singular holistic redevelopment plan, application for the entire plan area, keep the 35%. And we added prorated, but maybe that's the wrong connotation. Maybe what we really mean is distributed throughout because it doesn't have to be proportional throughout. You're you're looking at a cumulative across the 102 acres. But for a situation where there's not one plan, where there may be multiple developers or multiple phases, we wrote for a phased fragmented redevelopment plan strategy, each application is to include a minimum of 30% green area as defined in the MXD zone. So this 30% would be based upon the application and not the total site. And before I move on, I'd be happy to answer any questions if this is the easiest way to go through these.
Questions or comments? Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and sorry, the background was getting in the way of my hand. I like I like the idea, Rob, and I think it preserves. It addresses my concern, which was the preservation of green space across the entire acreage if we had mixed or sequential or disparate applicants come in. The question I have is, why the 30% as opposed to the 35%? I mean, it's probably just a math thing that's not going through my head.
Sure. So once again, and while we don't have a slide for this, well, we sort of do. So 35% across the whole 102 would be 35.71. If you broke out, if you applied the 35 at, let's say, for simplicity's sake, each parcel, um, you would actually end up being more than 35% because 35% of each parcel, as opposed to at the 30%, which comes out, actually to help this, Chris, if you could please go to packet page 11. So the multicolored column on the right, Councilmember Wu, is the 30%. So that, you know, and it's a portion, you know, based upon each of the parcels. So it's 30% of the acreage of each of the parcels in play. That comes out to 28.2. If you did 35% of the same parcels, it tabulates to 32.9. Then when you add in the eight acres, it's over 40, it's almost 41 acres total, which is overall greater than 35% for the entire 102 acre site. So again, with this 28.2, then if for some reason you added in the eight acres, you're basically almost back in balance at almost 35%.
Rob, I think the confusing thing is that purple bar says 27.68 on it.
Yeah, because this is spread overall, over the entire 94 acres. So we're not, that was the goal with the unified plan. We have the ability to review it, and we don't go, well, you must have, you know, 35% here, then 35% there. The goal is to get to 35% across the 102. So that's why, Chris, next slide, please.
So, so Rob, why are we backing out the eight acres that I believe resides on the inline store lot and not crediting that to that parcel?
Um, because, once again, the the issue was, say, you know, for simplicity's sake, Lord and Taylor comes in first. Under a unified plan, they can count the eight acres up by Frederick Avenue because it's a unified plan. As an individual, the MXD zone is very clear is that you can only count green area that is on the same tract of land as the development. So being separated by being a separate parcel on the other side of Russell Avenue, none of the properties really on the inside could count.
Any other questions or comments before we move forward? Not, oh, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I like this as well. I think one of the hallmarks of the major mixed use communities that already exist are green spaces distributed throughout those projects, whether we're looking at Kentlands or Lakelands, Rio, Crown Farm, Spectrum, Parklands. I think those are key features of that that enhance the livability and sense of place in those in those communities and neighborhoods. So I do have one suggestion. My suggestion on that chart on page 11 is on that that purple graph is I would just go ahead and add the eight acres that represent the the stormwater facilities, the ponds, so that you do have a total of 35.7. And then illustrate that that's still going to be part of the over the overall green acreage for the entire master plan area. So just so people aren't confused about what happened to eight acres, so that's it. But overall, I like this recommendation makes a lot of sense.
Okay, Phil, go ahead, and then John Bauer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, Rob. And this may be because I share Councilmember Wu's affinity for math. But I, is there a scenario where, say, if somebody assembled two parcels or three parcels, where it could skew this calculation? I guess that's the only thing that concerns me is that, like, you know, trying to think through all of the potential unintended consequences or unintended permutations here. If someone, if someone had, you know, put together two or three parcels, does that change the math in in this analysis?
Within the core, it does not because thankfully, the Thagorean's theorem will always hold that a squared plus b squared equals c squared.
Bravo. I think that's a first at a council meeting. Well done, Rob Robinson. Okay, John Bauer.
Rob, I'm going to ask for your opinion or your your kind of comment on something. Effectively, what this does is it normalizes the the net number of acres that will be green space under two kind of two ends of the spectrum of the scenarios with development, all in or completely fractured. One of the things that I can imagine is that when it's fractured, the actual quality of the acreage that's left is green space is maybe limited, I was gonna say maybe, because you don't have the flexibility of tying those pieces together in a way that's that's meaningful, maybe in a central location, some some, you know, strictly from a from a planning in a in a in a use kind of perspective, not gross area. So I wonder aloud, just for your comment, does it really make sense to give credit on the percentages because you still net the same number of acres, but potentially lose the flexibility of creating really high quality spaces that are meaningful in size and adjacencies and all that? And if we should just leave it at 35%, meaning that, yeah, we'll net more acres if it ends up going in piecemeal. But so what? There's nothing wrong with more green space, but at least, you know, you're not necessarily giving credit for that because it may not be something we want to give credit for because it may not be as high quality of space once all is said and done on the plan.
I appreciate your comments, and there's two things, one that goes back to the synergy. So again, the more land you begin to accumulate towards one, you're going to pull from another priority. Two, as we wrote throughout the master plan, and we sort of came to resolution to last week. Remember, we wrote a lot of stuff into the post-master plan sections about the review of these. So I think we don't have the challenge, if the first application comes in and it's 10 acres and they show something, we're going to have a diligent review both by staff, the council, the commission, and the public on how they're laying this out. And remember, one of our goals in the master plan is any, you know, sketch plan that comes in in a fragmented scenario, I'm really going to be looking at the connectivity for the land adjacent to it. So I don't have as much concern that, you know, we're just going to get a blob of something, and it's never really going to connect. The overall visions for the entire site don't go away with this. It just addresses almost in some ways an equity issue and making sure that we're trying to keep the plan somewhat in balance. So we're achieving the goals that each scenario addresses a unique development scenario. Each each, you know, produces almost 11 acres of parkland, and and everything's still going to have to go through the review process.
That's good. Thanks. Okay, looking for any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Okay, Rob, go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. Page 13, please. Let's move on to the next. So the next section to talk about now that we sort of have green space resolved is the residential. And I'll read the condition as written right now. Establish a residential unit cap of 1,600 units with the following percentages. Townhomes up to 7%. What we called missing middle are now going to call gap housing 20 to 30% and multifamily rental and own 63 to 73%. I've put in parentheses what that actually heart means from hard unit count. So we're talking 112, 320 to 533, or 1,000 to a little over, you know, 1150. At a minimum, upon looking at this in the discussions that came out and looking at the comments that received, the minimum proposed changes that staff is recommending is replace the percentages with actual unit count numbers. People seem to get very confused by the percentages. Retain the maximum 1,600 unit count total. But we really think with hard numbers, we should establish a townhouse ceiling count cap, establish a gap basement rather than a cap, but a gap basement, and I'll go into why, and establish a multifamily ceiling count also. So next slide, please. So quickly, let's go through the three categories. So for townhomes, you can see a variety all taken from different developments here in Gaithersburg. And from our methodology, as we began doing the analysis, we really looked at the densest part of Crown and their townhomes. And really what we came up with is that essentially, including alleys and rights of way and front yards and side yards, 100 townhome units really fit on seven and a half acres. Next slide, please. So our next section was gap housing. And again, as a reminder to the public for what came out last week, this means good affordably priced, and it's housing that's designed to bridge the income and architectural gap between single family homes and traditional multifamily. And gap housing offers a greater opportunity for homeownership with these more smaller, unique housing typologies. It does not include townhomes or buildings, multifamily buildings with more than four dwelling units. And as a reminder, a building with four dwelling units is still a quadplex, which is still considered gap housing. And lastly, before we move on, as a reminder, single family detached homes on individual lots are prohibited in the plan. Next slide, please. So with gap housing, we're showing a triplex, the two over twos in Crown, a bungalow court, and looking at the Crown at the bottom of neighborhood one, the two over two development, essentially 100 units, 50 buildings, fit on 3.3 acres. And we think this is sort of a good judge because most of these gap housing units sort of fall in the same width as the two over twos. They're all approximately around 25 feet in width. So looking through, if we sort of use this, again, 50 buildings on 3.3 acres. Next slide, please. And the last of the groups that we're talking about with the cap is multifamily. And again, these are all taken from around different developments more recent in Gaithersburg. And I think it's important to understand, once again, the relationship to acreage. So Camden and Washingtonian North is 365 units, over almost six acres. It has an internal parking garage, it's five stories in height. Right below that is the new product coming in at neighborhood five at Crown, and it's like 20 units more, but only over 2.7 acres. But of note, on the Fields Roadside, it's it's six stories. At the southern portion, it's seven stories. So they only increased about 20 units that could fit on a smaller site, but they increased the height. And lastly are the Lausitz Crown, which is a four story product, and it's only 120 units over 1.8 acres. But when you compare that to Camden, it sort of balances out. Camden is about three times the size on three times the acreage as the Laus. Next slide, please. So going into these, we're going to have a lot of graphics, and these are only for spatial analysis. I want to make clear, this is not us trying to design things. It's to help sort of explain from a spatial thing what's going on. So what you see here is actually the master plan recommendation. The area at the top right in yellow is really a graphic, you know, two scale representation of what, how much land you would need for 112 or 7% of townhomes. The green space in the center is 11.24 acres, which we said is going to be evident either in a 35% unified scenario or 30% there. And then the remaining balance down below, even though it has the ponds there, just for simplicity's sake, we put the residential on top, is the commercial. So once again, this is sort of showing the synergy that we talked about of the balance between the three units. So again, this is 112 townhomes, 320 gap product, and a little over 1,100 multifamily. Now, to the point that was made, we looked at this, and when we looked at it this way, we were like, wow, that really doesn't look like a lot of townhomes. I bet we actually probably could get more. So before we move on to the next slide, we decided to look at two different scenarios. The next slide is if we went 30, 30, you know, a third. Next slide, please. And it became evident to us, this does not meet the visions. You know, 30% townhomes takes up 35 and a half acres for 480 units, and it really only leaves 5.4 acres for the other housing. And really, when you get out of that, you get maybe, maybe between the two, without going to eight or 10 stories, an additional 300 units. So you're not even at 800 units for this. So you know, to get the balance of the 1120 is going to really be impossible without going excessively high height, which, you know, we continue to hear from multiple sources, is not going to happen anytime soon. Or it goes back to our synergy question, and what do you want to take from? Do you want to take from commercial, or do you want to take from green space? So looking at this, obviously, staff is not supportive of this. So going to the next slide, we thought, all right, what if we doubled essentially the 7%? And instead of, you know, going to 14, we just rounded up to 15. And what we came up with with 15% when you look at this is it allows 240 townhomes, which will equate to 36, you know, affordable housing units. It allows, you know, 23 acres, and if you take 10 acres of that, that still gives 300 gap housing units. So that's, you know, 152 over twos, 100 triplexes, 150 duplexes. You know, it affords a lot of opportunity. And using the Camden at Washingtonian North, we estimate you can get 700 to 800 multifamily units on four to five stories. And that takes you up to 1340. So again, you're only 260 short of the 1,600 cap. And if you, you know, if the market changed and eight to 10 stories was there, you could hit the 1,600. Next slide, please. So with this, you know, if the council and the commission decide they they want to step away from the 7%, you know, we can be supportive, you know, staff is supportive of this alternative. And obviously, anything in between, because we know now it works. With the 1,600 units, you know, the 240, over 1,000 multifamily units, and at a minimum, we get the 300 gap housing units, and we can establish that as our minimum base. But we do want to make aware, you know, any additional gap above the 300 will obviously reduce those high end numbers of the town or the multifamily. But this scenario still reflects the goal of density that fosters a variety of rental and ownership opportunities at various price points. So with that, I'd be happy to open up the discussion on the residential. Again, what we're recommending is to do ceilings. And the ceilings right now, we are proposing, you know, well, the ceilings on the townhomes and the multifamily and a basement on the gap, all based upon the 15% scenario.
Thank you, Rob. Who'd like to opine on this first? Mike Sesma.
Okay, continuing with the mathematical theme that we started with earlier. I was, you know, perhaps the problem is that we started with a prime number of seven. 7%. I was going to suggest 10% would be a reasonable limit, 100, that would be 160 units of townhomes, and then balance the rest between gap and multifamily. That would have been my suggestion on how to how to approach this. I think that's a reasonable number. It's, I still think we retain our our basic housing goals, but you know, that that's kind of where what I was thinking coming in here. I like the explanation of how you've done this and the flexibility that you know, that we have in moving to to the number of units rather than percentages, but still, you know, that I think either way, whether we're talking about percentages or number of units, it still works, so.
Thank you, Mike, and I agree, Rob. Thanks for the illustration of what the impacts of the different percentages, you know, equates to as a percentage of the property. Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I'd like to lead with a Lynn question. With respect to the the master plan, what is the legal impact of a a goal or a preference? Or you know how in our master plan, we say we strongly prefer certain things? How does that ultimately pan out with respect to the discretion afforded to the Planning Commission and the City Council when they're considering a development application?
Because we have provisions in the zoning ordinance that are applicable to both the Planning Commission, the Mayor Council's review. For most of our plans, there is language that does say that it must be in accord with the master plan. So therefore, you would need to be able to find compliance with the master plan. Because it is a would be a preference versus a requirement, that does leave some vagueness in the language and some discretion in that matter. Certainly, case law in Maryland does say that the master plan is more of a more than a guide that, you know, you do need to follow the requirements of the master plan.
Okay, so if we were to take, for example, sorry. Okay, so if we were to take, for example, a 10%. The the master plan strongly prefers housing or up to 10% townhouses. And they came in, a developer came in with 15%. Do they have a right to that 15%? Or and the with the planning condition in the city council be on firm ground to say, no, we've looked at your overall development application, and we think 11% is probably the sweet spot. So let's stick with that. I mean, how strong will I mean, how strong of a legal basis do we have to, to operate within that discretion? When, in the, in the, in the chance that we end up in a disagreement with respect to the mix of housing on the property?
Yeah, assuming there's no other code requirement that would contradict that preference, which, you know, I'm assuming we would make sure that there wouldn't be. You know, I think that you do have a certain amount of discretion in review of plans and finding compliance with the master plan. And certainly your, your findings of fact would have to have some rationale justifying your decision as to, you know, why you believe 11% or whatever the percentage is, is appropriate.
Okay, thanks, Lynn. And it sounds to me that resetting preferences, it does afford us some modicum or even a great level of discretion. And so the uneasiness that I had last week was with these hard caps. And the fact that, you know, we're setting a document that will govern the site for some amount of time into the future. And the impacts that these caps would have. And so my, my strong preference is to have strong preference. So whatever those numbers might be, maybe the 10% as Mike suggests, or the 15% like the reasonable option that, of the alternatives. But my concern is not tying down the development and market forces pertaining to that development by 10, 15, 20 years in the future. And so, so again, my preference would be for preferences. And so with respect to the 1600 limit cap, it seems like each of the permutations presented, it's kind of tough for us to get there. But there may be situations where, you know, the, say a developer comes in and they want to, you know, build the ivory tower for a never ending story on property and house 2,000 units. And, you know, do we want to be able to consider that? I, I would submit, I, I would want to consider any development that comes in, particularly if it's proposing density. And so I'm also concerned about the cap. And I'm wondering if we can set a preference in that regard as well, or strong preference, or something that will afford us the legal latitude at the time of considering a development application to be able to, you know, weigh the, the balance, the various forces that are prevailing on us at the time and be able to come up with the best product. Rather than imposing arbitrary, or I won't say arbitrary, because I'm sure it's thought through. But it's, it's temporally arbitrary. We're setting it right now without an understanding of future market to conditions. So that's my two cents.
So, so Rob, just to be clear, you're, you're saying that you don't want to have like a firm parameter on any of the housing types?
Firm parameter, I think, is, is a good way of putting it. I, I don't think we should have a 7% cap or a 10% cap. You know, if we want to set a 50% cap where there's no chance we're going to go in that direction, then yeah, I, I say set those outward limits as guardrails. But, you know, who knows five, 10 years from now, what the prevailing market conditions and what the sentiments with respect to development on the property might be. And I think the document should be in such a fashion that it guides potential applicants in the future on what we're looking for. But it also gives us the ability to, to not be set in stone. And, you know, if we see something that we really, really like, but we can't do it, we're going to actually have to come back and change the master plan in order to do what 10 years from now seems like the best thing since sliced bread. That, that's my concern is kind of the nailing it down now when, when market forces could change in the future.
Okay, any other questions or comments here? John Bauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rob, so I'm going to go through a couple of questions and then, and then make a proposal. But if, if live works ever make a reemergence, is that, do you think that's covered in the gap definition or somewhere else? Or what do you think?
So what we're writing now is essentially much as, you know, coming up Sharon's discussion, it's standalone residential. You know, we still throughout the master plan encourage, you know, or afford residential over commercial. Now, right now, the way we have it written is, you know, that still comes out of the 1600. So that is an opportunity, but we can't always bank on that. So again, really what we're looking at and what those graphics showed, what was, you know, standalone residential.
Okay, so the, then I guess the implication is you could get up to 1800 units if there was a mix in the commercial area potentially.
Potentially, but again, yes, but, but you know, we're still looking at trying to do, you know, a, a, a strong standalone residential, I mean, commercial core also. So, you know, we don't want to necessarily try to intuit. That was the other reason for the residential cap was to sort of open up more land for non-retail, um, commercial development. Because some certain uses just aren't going to acquaint themselves with residential above.
Fair enough, yeah, that's fair. Okay. So that probably needs a little more discussion. The other part to that I wanted to sort of dive into is in trying to define the gap housing, the, the two words, good and affordable, good seems a little nebulous. And affordable, I'm a little nervous, is a little too close to an actual definition for a type of housing. So, you know, would it be better to think of these in terms of buildings with two to six units in them? There are freestanding buildings with two to six, and it's something that's far more geometric and generic, so that it's very clear that what, what we're talking about is that not some sort of, you know, backhanded definition of something that's out there that doesn't have a very clear definition.
Because it seemed like. He wanted a catchy word to put throughout, so people would know as they read, as opposed to two to four story unit blocks.
Right, right. But, but I mean, you know, like, like any good, good design problem, if you said to somebody, you need a mix of housing. And by the way, part of that too would be within that range of mix. Like, we wouldn't want them all, in my opinion, we wouldn't want to end up with a scenario where you had seven or 10% or 15% townhouses that were all three stories. And then the missing mill of 30% that were all triples. And then one big block of apartments. I mean, even within that gap housing, you'd want a range of building types and configurations, right? I mean, that would be the goal. So it, it seems like language like that would be more appropriate than trying to use an acronym that isn't quite what, what these are about. These are about a scale and a, and a type of house that by virtue of how they're built, will be more affordable potentially, but they aren't in and of themselves affordable housing. You know, specifically, although there will be some mixed in there. So it's sort of an observation about how we might get at that number. And you know, what, what that might, what that might mean in terms of what the total number is, because if you end up then bleeding into the commercial area, at least on the buildings that can shoulder it literally, housing units, maybe the, maybe the upset numbers in 1600, but, but more if it does, if it, if it can be blended a bit more, which then leaves you with these numbers being more about percentages and less about cap, cap numbers or, or a mix that's a target as opposed to absolutes on the quantities. So it's, it's something I would like to dive in a little more, more with. And I, I don't know what other opinions are out there, concerns.
Thank you, John. Loriann, and then Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to comment on the multifamily rental and own set aside. 63 to 73%. Are, how, have we decided what percentage of these would be the condo units?
No, we wouldn't know that till an application comes in. That, that's a, a private sector decision, how, how they wish to operate them. We just want to acknowledge, you know, much like the graphics that we did, we showed the lofts, which are condo and the other two are rental.
Because I, I know that we were trying to minimize the amount of townhouses because of affordability. But the condos can be just as if not more expensive, once you include the condo fees. And so if we're going to consider caps, do we want to specify what sort of multifamily units we are thinking about in addition to the townhouse? Do we want to also isolate condos and how many condos we're going to be proposing or setting a cap for?
So, to be clear, I'm not sure if the goal on the initial 7% potentially higher cap on townhomes was, was about affordability. I think it's more about achieving the density goals than the overall unit count.
I thought it was about affordability and the price for the townhouses, the potential price for the townhouses. Because the townhouses at Crown are not considered affordable. So I thought that's why we were setting a smaller amount on the townhouses. At least that's what I thought we were.
It was, it was a combination of the two. Obviously, townhomes are a more expensive product, but they also take up a greater land mass. So as that first, you know, with the 30% showed, you're bang for your buck on a density perspective and an opportunity perspective are, are really minimized. So that's why throughout this whole thing, you know, while Chair Bauer, I'm, I'm still going to use the term gap for the time being. You know, that's why we're sort of trying to emphasize these other opportunities that are on the affordability spectrum, open to a greater population, especially when you look at the median incomes on that side of town to, you know, afford an opportunity that currently doesn't exist.
So these percentages are just going to be focused on density and not necessarily the housing types. This is why we have the percentage.
Well, we want to get away from the percentages, but the percentages did reflect one of three categories on types. So it was townhomes or it was gap housing, which includes the smaller duplexes, triplexes, quads, bungalow courts, two over twos. And then your traditional multifamily, which is, you know, single building with more than four units. And, and again, with some of the discussion to Councilmember Wu's point, you know, we can remove the discussion of eight to 10 stories, you know, and go, you know, up to 20 stories, you know, again, to achieve the density. Should the market prevail? We just went eight to 10 because we thought, you know, even in the slightly midterm, that was probably more feasible than a 20 story building.
Okay. Okay, I'm just, you know, I know that there was concern about how much affordable housing can go here. And if, you know, a majority of the units are, I mean, it's going to be a mix between the rental units and potential condos. But those two over twos are also considered a condo. So I'm just.
And, and, and just to be clear, you know, regardless of how we break it down with 1600 units, we're still getting 240 afforded, regulated affordable units in, in this development. Now, if it's all rental, it will all be, you know, you know, at MPDUs. If it's be simple, you know, half of that will have 120 workforce housing units and 120 MPDUs. But at the end of the day, no matter how we split this, we're still going to get 240 affordable units on 1600.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay, thanks, Loriann. We'll go to Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was going to raise that point as well, but Rob Robinson beat me to it, is that the affordable housing ordinance will still apply across the board and be spread across the different unit types as well as per our, our ordinance. I wanted to go back to the earlier discussion about concern over market forces and flexibility. I am actually sensitive to that concern and have, have raised that issue when we have discussed individual development applications at that point in the process, when we're reviewing a specific development proposal. But the master plan is something different. It is really a guidepost for what kind of plan applicants are going to be submitting in the development application process in the first place for our consideration. And my concern with having just preferences in a master plan document is that they offer so much flexibility that we're not providing sufficient guideposts for applicants. And we get into these situations where applicants submit plans to us that are significantly at variance with what our preferences might have been. And want to rely on the notion that, hey, those were just preferences. And then we have to have this sort of difficult back and forth. And it sort of strips the master plan of its meaning and usefulness if everything is just a preference. So that's just my view. I do understand we don't want to be so rigid. I mean, the whole point is, is that within the formulas that we're placing into the master plan, there needs to be, you know, a sliding scale within each sort of subcategory of uses. That's why we have floors and ceilings on the different types of uses. But at the same time, I just, I'm not comfortable with the idea that everything should just be a preference because I think it just creates too much uncertainty and too many problems and sort of undermines the whole point of the master planning process, which of course is very different in kind from the development application process. As for the split that we've been discussing, you know, I put a lot of thought into this. I understand all those market force concerns. I understand, you know, the, the significance of a strong limitation on the number of townhome units. But I think all along, we've been saying that we really want this to be a bold and transformative master plan. And a ultimately, hopefully, a bold and transformative project or series of projects that occurs within the master plan boundaries. And we want it to achieve real density and to achieve true diversity of not only pricing, but architectural styles and living spaces. And I think in order to do that, we have to do something bold and transformative. And to me, that means experimenting with this idea of significant reductions on townhome, townhomes and allowing for much more significant density in the other residential types. And I'm particularly excited about what we're currently calling these gap housing type units. So I would be supportive of keeping the master plan draft as it is with the 7% cap. I can live with a compromise that maybe bumps it up to 10 or 15. I could live with that. But where I am is I think we need to act boldly. And I know folks in the development community, you know, cringe at this idea. But I think we really need to sort of put our money where our mouth is if we're going to try to do something really different and transformative here. And if we're really going to elevate density in the way that, you know, we talk about it and actually do it. So that's where I am.
Thank you, Ryan. And I personally, I'd be comfortable in the, either the seven or 10 range. So Neil, let's hear what you have to say. And then John Bauer.
Thanks, Mayor. So, you know, I'd be concerned over relaxing any of the numbers that are given on the basis that, you know, we went through the visioning exercise a couple of years ago and discovered through that process that we were in need of increasing density to handle the population that is expected to come into this region as we go forward. So maximizing density on this property within, you know, the reasonable bounds of not requiring 10 story buildings or whatever is, I think, fair. But that, that all said, I'm wondering if the planning department has gone through the exercise of kind of doing some, some basic calculations on economic feasibility of this kind of project, you know, revenue per unit, per acre, that sort of thing. Have, have we looked at the economics of this to make sure that this is actually feasible? Potentially from a development point of view?
No, not at this time, because once again, often these studies are, you know, looking at a snapshot now. And, you know, the master plan we're envisioning to be a longer term thing. So we can't, the same reason why we had set upfront, why we weren't doing market studies with this, because the validity of the underlying data just isn't there. And, you know, maybe Sharon can chime in some more because she and I had a lot of conversations about this. So we do think it's feasible because we see development projects coming into the market that are similar. We see additional planning efforts, both at Montgomery County level and other jurisdictions, you know, trying to strive for the all, same goals. But we really weren't looking at, you know, the cost of construction and what rents would be.
Thank you, Neil. I think it was John Bauer, then I see Matt Hopkins hand up. Go ahead, John, then we'll go to Matt.
Thanks. So again, another kind of question on, on the opinion of, of planning staff and others. What would, what would preclude us from instead of publishing ceilings and floors for numbers simply to create targets? So we would say town, a target of 10% for townhouse, a target of 30% for gap and a target of 60% for multifamily, given the fact that once a plan does hit, it could be 9.6%, it could be 7.4%. The point is so that we're not wrapped around the. Nine point six percent, it could be seven point four percent. The point is so that we're not wrapped around the axle on becoming too precise and and. On a number on calculations only to give up on a good solution. That's the first part of the question. The second is, is there a way we can? Because I think what'll be key to this is not only that the gap housing is a part of this, is it a prominent part of this project, but. That it in and of itself has a range of opportunities, not just one or two times, but something that represents. You know, from two to six or two to four, whatever the number of units per building um, makes sense, but that there's. That in and of itself is going to create some really interesting neighborhoods, which is what we were after, right? People that that really um. Find these neighborhoods compelling. So I guess the question is, should we aim for used targets as opposed to ceilings and floors and why not? And then is there a way we can get the thirty percent or whatever that it numbered, the twenty to thirty percent, thirty, thirty to five hundred, three to unit gap housing? Get something in there that actually represents a range within that, within that that spectrum of housing. Maybe, Rob, you can you can start with a comment on that.
Um, okay, quickly, because I do want to hear from Commissioner Hopkins, being a Vice President of Development. I'm really curious. He may answer Councilmember Harris's question. Um, the target then for these targets, you're still then going back to a percentage. So you're still going to an overall cap of sixteen hundred. Um, so by having a hard ceiling, at least it's a number. When you begin having wiggle room, it goes back to that 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 synergistic diagram that I did. You know, if you don't have some sort of definitive, eventually you can begin dipping into other areas. Um, so you you know, we often hear from developers, everybody likes, you know, definitive statements, you know, they don't like guesswork in the marketplace. A ceiling or a basement is takes out all guesswork. You know, um, what is going potentially up to be approved. That doesn't mean you have to do that. You can always do less, but the only one that we are setting the basement on is the gap, which would allow us to go above that. Um, again, you know, that would conceivably say on sixteen hundred units, if somebody wanted to come in and do sixteen hundred gap units, they could do it. And there would just be no multifamily or townhomes. Um, but when you begin creating gray areas. Um, with townhomes, as we've seen, you know, from the spatial analysis, it begins bleeding. It has um, additional. You know, context, things can happen. Obviously, if you'd, you know, if you wanted to set a target, if you wanted to keep the sixteen hundred cap. But have something where you you know, if you wanted to accommodate. Um, a solely gap housing and multifamily development scenario with no townhomes, you know, we could set those limits. Uh, again, I think we we begin to, you know, sort of go in circles. If we don't really like percentages, targets aren't that much different from percentages. People understand hard numbers.
Okay, we'll go to uh, Matt Hopkins.
Um, well, I know, I guess I know why Rob wanted wanted me to talk, because I'm gonna agree with him on both those sort of explanations, just that there's. Uh, there's some wonderful dependability and therefore uh, predictable land costs when you have something that's clear. Uh, and has a gap, and I think John's concerned about sort of the geometric physical constraints of a very tight number. Uh, if it has enough of a gap, which I think Rob's numbers do, then there's some flexibility in there to how they actually get arranged. So I think I think we're trying to hit a very. Difficult threshold, but I think Rob has it. Uh, and then I'll just, I'll throw the two cents in to say that, um, you know. I have never underwritten anything the same way twice. Uh, markets change within weeks. Uh, and uh, the the ability to jump from one product type to the next, depending on how builders supply materials. The market wants um, is is more critical than any kind of market analysis would tell us now. What a market analysis might be able to tell us, but I think the three fifty five market analysis, and I think there's a number of well-published, large uh, area market analysis. Uh, from our, from our, the big groups that do that, um, uh, about whether we're going to grow job growth. Uh, whether we're going to have um, influx of new residents, whether we're going to have resident demographics changing from. You know, uh, empty nesters to families to to younger uh, folks. Um, and I think we know all that information already. So there, I don't think there's any um, value in doing a a momentary temporal uh, market analysis for income production. So. That's all.
Thank you, Matt. Rob Wu.
Actually, I saw Sharon. I I already had a chance to speak, I would speak. I wouldn't mind if Sharon went first.
Okay, go ahead, Sharon.
So, um, I appreciate the um, the math, um, being a banker, you know, we uh, we tend to look at numbers pretty hard. Um, and I I know you're trying to get to a hundred percent, but just hear me out. What, going back to what Rob Wu had said about, you know, a target that um, was, you know, kind of an aspirational target. And then everything has an aspirational target, so it doesn't have to equal a hundred percent. So there's a little bit of flexibility in there between the unit types that's a band rather than. So say you wanted to go to fifteen percent townhouses, but you really wanted to discourage another product type, not discourage, but just limit it. Have you thought about that rather than having to equal a hundred percent?
Um, we did, and we're always open to hear something again to us, based upon the spatial analysis that we sort of showed. Um, if nothing else, the the limitation should be on towns, because that is the greatest suck and with the competing interests of green area and commercial. Um, you you know, this continuum. Uh. But but we still like the hard cap, you know, we think that is the target. Sixteen hundred is the target, not the subtypes within that. You know, Crown, when it came in, had a target of twenty two fifty, and here we're coming in, and we're still not even gonna hit that. And that was almost double the size of Lake Forest Mall. Um, so you you know, to us, the target is trying to achieve sixteen hundred. Rather than trying to hit eleven hundred multifamily units, if that makes sense, you know, sort of where we're looking at it. We we really want to do the density, but we want to increase opportunity that isn't found on this site.
Sharon, do you have any more? A follow up?
Um, no, no, I was, because I was, I I see the the plan, and I really like the 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 um, the colored map here about the acreage. Because I'm a visual person as well, and I like the green space part of it, and I appreciate the yellow and the townhouses and the purple and the rest, the other residential. Um, and I see what you're trying to do. It's really more of a, is it, is it? If it's monetary, it's a different thing, because the sixteen hundred units is going to produce X cash flow, and you're going to cap it, and that's what you're going to find out to be a market value at X number of time and. Whatever. And and again, we have to make this um, something that's marketable to a future developer. And again, they're profit driven. I understand that our, we're we're community driven. Um, and I want to make sure that it can be financeable at some point, and I don't want to hamstring anyone um, as a banker. Um, to to limiting something um, in terms of, um. I mean, I understand your point about the sixteen hundred acres, and I really like the green space, the eleven acres. But I would like a little bit more flexibility, because I don't know in five years what the market's gonna be, and I don't know what that's gonna pencil out to be as a developer. I'm kind of saying what Matt was saying, and who knows what's gonna happen in a few years, and who knows what's gonna happen next week. Um, post COVID even. Um. That's why I was saying maybe it's.
I I understand it, and to build that in, that's why we did the ten year review again. You know, we're not, you you know, carving something on stone tablets. So let it be written, so let it be done. I mean, this will come in for a review and we'll be able to pivot. But by the same token, if we get so nervous about that, we shouldn't do a master plan, because we're never gonna know what the market is from time to time. That's why. We sort of have to establish this vision, establish the framework, give some certainty to the market as to what we're looking for. And responding to all the stakeholders who participated in the focus groups. I mean, we had a large percentage who didn't want any residential on this site. Wanted it to be solely commercial. So so again, it it's balancing the competing interest and what is best for the city.
And I remember, Rob, too, the bankers' um, roundtable that we had. There were bankers in there that said it should be mainly affordable housing. There was one in particular from another bank, so I hear you. There was, there were quite a few, um, very diverse opinions.
All right, thank you. We'll go to Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just throwing out an idea, kind of dovetailing what Sharon just said. Um, you know, a- as you can tell, my my queasiness is is more on the absolutisms. Um, and the precision of certain numbers. And so, you know, kind of to Ryan's point, you know, if we were to set guardrails that were further out, I'd be more comfortable with that. Now provide guidance. But what about flipping it? What about, you know, as Neil was just um, articulating, one of the problems with townhouses. Is that you're not going to be able to achieve, if you do a hundred percent townhouses, you're not going to achieve the density that that is desired for the site. Um, but what about putting a floor? What about, say, you have, you you can build a mix. We've got targets. Here's what we'd like to see on the site, but you can't go below a thousand units, so you can't build all townhouses. And if you want to build predominance of townhouses, you're gonna have to build ten story buildings in order to make up that density. Um, and then set targets and then set incentives if we even want to, density incentives throughout the site.
We we thought about that, but then the challenge is, then you also have to set minimum acreage for the commercial and minimum acreage for the parkland. Because if you say we need a thousand units, you will see someone who comes in with a thousand townhomes. And that will gobble up, you know, three quarters of the site. Um, and again, if the master plan says that, once that sketch plan comes in, it's very hard to deny. Because you are in accordance with the master plan. Again, this is where it goes back. We're trying to find the balance of the mix of uses. Knowing that there's a finite amount of land to develop, so it's balancing the priorities. Again. The other concern is obviously, and I've had this, you know, the planning commissions discussed it with staff and staffs discussed it with back. You know, while roofs spring in, huh, you know, commercial at a certain point, if it's just solely roofs, the commercial will go away. You know, there there's not, you know, it it's not attractive enough. Um, you know, it becomes just tract homes. So that's really what the concern, and again, so everybody's aware, the sixteen hundred, you know, wasn't just a random number. This was sort of going back. To the municipal growth element and looking at our other MXD zone developments and and, you know, surprisingly seeing what that density is. And, you know, a lot of times, overall, once you take into account the green space and the commercial and everything else with that acreage. It does come out to like sixteen units per acre. So this one's really is in line with, you know. Uh, in in particular, our more denser MXD zone properties. So, you know, that i- i- if if the issue is, do we want to raise the seventeen hundred? You know, staff is amenable to anything. We're here to receive guidance from the council and the commission about how to edit this. But we just always want to make clear, you know, you you can't take from, you you can't give to one without taking from another. So what what is the policy priority for the council and the commission?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Rob, and and I'll just reiterate that. You know, my my concern is the precision of numbers and not affording ranges and the ability for discretion in the future. And if we are setting the parameters, the left and right parameters, they should have. They they should be in the range of, we don't want, there's no chance you're gonna build that, but to the extent that there is, okay, we'd consider that. Those should be within the parameters. And so that's kind of why I was asking Lynn the questions about, you know.
Yeah, Rob, yeah, thank you. You you made you made that entirely clear. Do you have any, is there any new question or comment here?
Um, I'll make a comment.
Please.
Good job, Rob.
All right, um, do we have any other questions or comments before we go to the public?
Well, we still have more presentation.
Oh, we do.
And I would like to sort of put a bow on the residential, just so for clarity purposes. One of the things we clearly heard from the commission is. Let's work on that gap housing name before it comes back before them. Um, we understand what's being talked about. We've already started talking internally about. How to flesh out the definition to bring in um, some of Chair Bauer's comments. Um, really, as it relates to this special condition. I have heard, keep it as it is, um, but you know, dump the percentages. I have heard ten percent and I have heard fifteen percent. I I'm just trying to seek guidance on what will get adopted. Um, is it the ten percent with a ceiling on towns and a ceiling on multifamily and a minimum? A basement on gap, or is there something different?
All right, so, um, Rob, go ahead. Then Loriann.
You know, i- i- if we're going to to put caps, my my preference would be the fifteen percent um, for towns. Um, I also don't like the sixteen. If if we're never gonna reach sixteen hundred, then why even have a maximum density? You know, maybe they come in with a stellar plan that has two thousand units. So so if our, if our goal, one of our goals is density, why have a gap? Anyway.
Uh, just if I could clarify, Rob, you know, sixteen hundred is the goal. But that goal immediately gets compromised when we want to add more towns, right? So we we tried to bring forward. Something that would meet what you raised, um, which which immediately compromises the sixteen hundred.
Correct. And so the sixteen hundred is is a, is not a target, it's a cap. I I'd rather, you know, if we have an application for fifty thousand units on this property of mini houses stacked on top of each other, and it made sense. And we wanted to consider it, why not? Uh, that's a little hyperbolic, but.
Um. So maybe it's, maybe some combination of the acreage, the issues, the acreage, right? So. If the market explodes and all of a sudden skyscrapers are are feasible and and easy. Um, density numbers change, sixteen hundred changes. So maybe it's some combination of acreage, Rob, that we work into the. Just just throwing it out as a possible path forward as we.
All right, um, Ryan, go ahead. Well, actually, Loriann had her hand first, and then Ryan, go ahead, Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, since we didn't get a picture of what the uh, a ten percent. Um, max for the townhouses would look like, if we take that from the multifamily residential. Then I think we would still be able to, um, you know, not infringe upon the commercial. Um, acreage that we want to preserve as much as possible, and so. I'd be fine with the ten percent, and I think we threw around all those different combinations of numbers between. Seven and fifteen and ten percent seems like a fair.
Okay. All right, that's progress. We have two for ten percent now. Uh, Ryan, go ahead.
There was another question, wasn't there, Rob, that you wanted a clarification on?
Um, it was really uh, based upon trying to figure out what what is the accurate, you know, ten percent equates to two hundred and forty townhomes on sixteen hundred. So, um, what what I'm hearing right now is there's two votes for a two hundred and forty town, uh, no, 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 ten percent is a hundred.
Oh, that's a hundred and sixty.
Yeah, 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 you got, you you've got me here. I'm finally screwed up my math, and so I've confused you all the evening, and now I confuse myself. Um, so the ten percent is a hundred and sixty townhomes, so right now there's two for that. There's one vote for two hundred and forty townhomes.
And that, would we take it from the multifamily or it doesn't matter or?
No, it would still come out of the sixteen hundred. So again, what I had mentioned was the the highest staff think is is realistic. Is two hundred and forty townhomes, which equates to fifteen percent of the sixteen hundred. So that would be the ceiling. Anything below that obviously would work. Um, and again, we even, you know, looking at it felt, you know, seven percent may be a bit too low.
And I, I mean, I I would agree about the cap on the maximum number of units. I mean, I appreciate the percentage. I think that gives a lot of guidance on what sort of housing types we want on the property. Um, I just, you know, as Rob mentioned, you know, someone could come. You know, present a really innovative design, so I don't know if sixteen hundred is. Limiting our ability or um, should we stick with percentages instead of numbers? Um, so that that was my only comment, because I know you asked about. Questions and clarity on a max number of units.
All right, thanks, Loriann. We'll go to Ryan.
I just wanted to point out, my understanding, and Rob Robinson can correct me, but uh, the idea of a overall residential units max. Uh, kind of is put there to make sure that the entire site isn't eaten up by residential. Uh, and to ensure that, you know, the portion that we want to have be commercial or other open space. Um, you know, that there is sufficient acreage left over, so if that we put fifty thousand units on the site. You know, that that would eat into the other uses that we want to try and work in that are that are clearly, you know, uh, included in the master plan. Um, and as much as I have mixed feelings about how it's been applied over the years, we also have an adequate public facilities ordinance. And the notion that we could build fifty thousand homes while appealing, again, hyperbole, obviously, but the notion that we could build. A lot, a lot of homes, um, you know, doesn't. Exist in a vacuum. We'd have to take into account, you know, all of the infrastructure and all of the support services that would be needed. To accommodate that, which to me seems another reason why we occasionally have a hard cap on the number of units in a master plan. Um, but I am a big fan of height and would love to see creative designs that are financially viable. Uh, that go higher. Um, but having said that, I just kind of wanted to offer some context for why we might have a unit cap. On residential in the plan and let staff kind of talk more about that if they want, but I will reiterate what I said earlier. I'd be supportive of the existing seven percent uh, cap on townhomes. But as a compromise, I'd be willing to go along with ten or fifteen. Uh, my second choice is ten, and my third choice would be fifteen.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. We'll go to Mike.
That sounds like ranked choice voting, Ryan. Uh, yeah, so ten percent makes sense. The cap, the overall cap makes sense. Look, I I think we still. There is still an issue here in terms of the community we live in, uh, the expectations of current residents and future residents. I think the comparison to other. I think the comparison to other projects that have, uh, developed over the last fifteen to twenty years. Sixteen hundred is a reasonable number of residential units for this, this amount of acreage. Given that the other part of mixed use is commercial. Uh, uh, and I think that's paramount here. We're basically replacing a large commercial district with. A mixed use district in which residential is an important component, but so is the commercial development. So. I think that I, I prefer. Per, you know, recommended percentages or preferences or, I, you know, I guess percentage caps. Or ranges. Uh, with an overall hard cap in terms of the number of units. I, I, I'm not sure, you know, whether we're talking about. The current community or even the future community and what people are looking for, uh, that, that. People are looking for a density of fifty thousand here or twenty thousand or ten thousand. I think, um, you know, they're looking for mixed use. That combined retail, commercial, which means office and professional uses, R and D. Uh, light industry as well as some residential that, uh, where you can live where you work. So.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Um, Neil, do you want to weigh in here? So I see we have, uh, to the specific question about the percentages, we have two for ten percent. We have one whose second choice would be ten percent. Neil, where are you on this?
So I am still coming down in the side of density is what we really need at this point. So my first choice would be seven percent. Ten percent would not be the end of the world, but I'd still prefer to see. Uh, us aim at, uh, at a higher density level for this site if that is possible.
All right. Well, then I'm seeing two tens, one seven or ten, one, and then, uh, one seven and one fifteen. So to me, I think we're going to end up going with the ten. It will just have to go with Ryan's second choice to get us somewhere here.
I think we're at eight point seven five, actually.
Well done. Pythagoras would be.
I don't like prime numbers. I think, uh, you know.
Okay. All right, Rob. So you got, you got your number ten percent.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. So when it comes back, you will see a hundred and sixty towns, you will see a basement on gap. And the balance will be in multifamily and we'll base it upon sixteen hundred units. And so let it be written, so let it be done.
No, I thought it was going to be presented as a, as a percentage. Of types rather than hard number. I, I know what ten percent equals out of the cap, but still.
Okay. We were gonna. I'm, I'm fine with that. We had, i- if that moves us, we will go to percentages. I'm fine with that.
Okay, go ahead with the presentation, Rob.
Um, you guys are probably tired of me at this point, so I am happy to turn it over to Sharon Dis to talk about the last two special conditions. Uh, related to commercial and then following that, anything either body wishes to revisit or discuss, you know, will be available to answer questions.
Okay, tech team, if you could bring up packet page twenty-two. Here are the current special conditions for commercials standalone, single retail tenant or solely retail. Multi-tenant, but all retail facilities are limited to a maximum of five acres total, including surface parking lots. Across the entirety of the redevelopment. Standalone retail or solely retail facilities, building footprints must not exceed thirty thousand square feet each. And staff is not recommending any changes to these special conditions. Next slide, please. And here's the graphic that superimposes the maximum five acre total. Including surface parking lots across the entire hundred and two acres. This just represents what five acres would look like. And then building footprints not to exceed thirty thousand each. So you could have multiple. Next slide, please. And here, this, this graphic represents the flexibility for retail only development. Remember those. Restrictions applied to retail only. The five acres could be contiguous or it could be spread among several sites. That means pad sites would be allowed. What we're talking about is a total of five acres across the entirety. Not that it has to be only in one place. And as far as the footprint of thirty thousand square feet, that's a footprint. There's no limit on the height of those buildings. So it's feasible for a retail only building to have multiple floors, increasing the square footage. And there's no maximum on the number of thirty thousand square foot retail only buildings. So if a developer wanted to cluster multiple thirty thousand square foot buildings and use. Uh, structured parking, that would be possible. And then behind all of that is the fact that the current zoning is C two and that zoning remains in place until changed. So if we had a large user that wanted to reuse one of the existing anchor buildings. That would not be triggered by the master plan. Next slide, please. And here's a representation of what thirty thousand square feet looks like. We used that number because it was, um, typically the largest. Local retailer, um, not general merchandise would be a grocer. And here are examples of grocery stores and their square footage. Trader Joe's is just over thirteen thousand square feet. Aldi is almost nineteen thousand square feet at Quince Orchard Plaza. Lidl is at twenty-nine thousand square feet for the facility planned for Montgomery Village. It's at thirty thousand square feet plus two hundred multifamily units for the project proposed in Durwood. Amazon Fresh, which is moving into the former Office Depot. Is just over thirty thousand square feet, existing building fixed size, but it gives you an idea that thirty thousand square feet is where these grocers are. The Wegmans plant for Twinbrook is the largest, ninety-two thousand square feet, but that's with four hundred and sixty multifamily units. And as proposed, the master plan amendment does not put a limit on square footage for retail when it's mixed with other uses. And that concludes our commercial portion. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Um, the, these recommendations make sense to me. I, I understand what you're getting at here. Council members, uh, planning commissioners, questions, comments? Rob Wu and then Mike Sesma.
Thanks, Mayor. And so that slide kind of raises another question for me that I'm not, it's not clear to me in my mind. About, you know, we talked about the cannibalization of commercial area if we had, you know, too much residential on the site. What about in the commercial areas? And so we set it out as a map where you've got like X number in residential, X number in commercial. What about if, you know, like down in Pike and Rose where you've got a hotel that sits below or sits above residential? Where you've got ten stories of residential and then you've got six stories of a hotel on top. Does the residential there that would be placed in the commercial acreage count toward the sixteen hundred cap? On the total site or how does that work?
It, it would count against the overall residential cap.
We're not segregating the, the geography into different second sections, are we? We're, uh, I mean, we're anticipating retail with residential on top as part of the mix. Isn't that correct?
Yes, but, but some of the mixed use to Sharon's point can also be ground floor retail with office above. It doesn't, you know, when we speak of vertical mixed use with retail, it's not solely limited to res over retail. It can be these other commercial uses.
Yeah. And that was my understanding as well. Um, but the, the question is more of, you know. The, the price commanded per square footage of commercial is higher than the price commanded per square footage of residential. So how do you incentivize the, that development of, of, for example, if the prices got there of steel? Construction where you've got, you know, a, a few floors of retail on the bottom, but they want to. Throw a residential up top. And so, so that mix would. How do you incentivize that kind of construction if you've got a residential cap across the entire site?
Rob, do you want to speak to that?
I was actually looking at Rob's picture too.
Now.
No, I, I don't have an, I'm not economic development.
I mean. I think that the physical characteristics of any site are going to mean that you can't look at the retail only land area and say you will get all your units out of. I mean, at the residential land area only, and you will get all the residential units out of that. I think that we will have to see residential development in the area that allows for mixed use. It, it just happens. You, you never get, a developer doesn't get the yield that they're hoping for. So I, I think that the market itself will provide opportunity for mixed buildings. I also think that we can't assume that the dollar value, the rents generated by various uses will remain in the same proportions. That we see at the moment. We are not talking about development within the next five minutes. And, um, for instance, what we've seen with the pandemic was the incredible increase in the value of logistics properties, basically warehouses. Exceeding a square foot value that I would have never anticipated. So I, I do think that by allowing for mixed use, the market will. Find that opportunity given engineering constraints, the opportunity. That the market itself presents for residential and the other commercial uses. And we have to remember too, that the commercial uses. Would include civic buildings as well. These aren't just retail, office, R and D. It, it allows for virtually everything. That's permitted that is not residential.
Yeah. I mean, my, my concern again is, you know, twenty years ago, they're looking at the Pike District and saying. We can't build high density here. It's car dealerships. Um, twenty years from now, we have this master plan, you can't build the Pike District here with those caps. In, in place. And so how do you incentivize that kind of density i- i- in that fashion? I know we were talking in the conversation of townhouses and things like that, but if we really want to be moving towards that kind of. Beyond brick and stick density, having the cap, and I know about, we're talking about the cannibalization. But you're not cannibalizing if you're putting first floor, second floor, commercial and then. You know, various stories of, of residential on top of that.
I, I think what we have to remember is that what we do know as years go forward is that land will become more scarce. And the higher the value as land values grow, the greater market incentive for density.
Yeah, but the cap cuts against that.
And like I said, I, I, I think our current cap is already aspirational, given that you typically don't get to build all you can.
I, I didn't mean to sound glib there. I apologize.
Okay, um. Further questions or comments on the commercial section or the, these commercial constraints?
Yeah, you know, I, I had a couple here. So, um. You showed us Sharon some local examples and I'm just trying to keep in mind. The thirty thousand must include surface parking as well, if that's part of the, the project. So I'm thinking of Amazon Fresh, the Office Depot building. So that, that square footage, that, that footprint is just the building or does that include the adjacent parking?
That, that is just the building.
Just the building.
But what we, what we heard over and over again in our focus groups was people didn't want. Surface parking. They wanted the site to be developed. Now that doesn't mean that it couldn't happen. That there could be a thirty thousand square foot building and acreage forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So thirty thousand square feet on five acres. If early in the development, someone wanted to do that, that would be possible. As land values rise, then you could see the surface lots develop. But, um, then again. Buildings pay rent and generate income. So there is market incentive for more buildings rather than surface parking.
Right, right. Well, so look, we've, I think we have two mixed use communities where we already have ground floor, floor retail. Commercial space, uh, with three to four stories of residential above, uh, at Crown. And at Spectrum, I think are, are good examples. Um. I think the, the, you know, knowing that this isn't going to happen next week or next month or next year. Uh, I think we can look at, uh, one might expect some, um. Uh, stabilization of, uh, the cost of materials, steel, concrete, et cetera. In the next few years as, uh, everything ramps back up, uh, production ramps up in those areas. So I'm, I'm less worried about how that's going, going to work out. I think it makes more sense to think about the types of. Uh, footprints or the types of buildings we'll see on these various footprints and whether we see, uh. Uh, a developer put, put together two of those adjacent thirty thousand square foot footprints, five acre footprints and, you know, into an assemblage. That makes sense. And then implement as well structured parking. That seems to. You know, that, that's, I think, the current model that we see in the, the metro DC area, including in Montgomery County. So. Um, you know, and whether that, that second story is going to be, uh, office. Uh, business, retail or, uh, residential. I, I still think that there's a possibility we've, you know, we, we already see it in a couple of places in the city. Would, uh, but this makes sense to me. I don't have any, I don't have any, uh, major concerns about this. I, look, I, I think it would be nice if we knew what was going to happen at a year, it, in a year at this site. But I don't think we have an idea what's going to happen in ten years at this site. Just because of the, the issues that we're dealing with ownership. But so I think it, it's reasonable to propose a. Within the master plan, something that, that, uh, builds on the advantages that we see already in this, uh, with this particular mixed use. Approach. So.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we go to the public? Not seeing any. Okay. Tech team, let's get ready to go to the public. Tech team, if you could play the, the instructional video for anybody who'd like to testify at this, um, work session. That would be great.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment. We can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Thank you, tech team. Um, as always, we ask that you keep your comments in no more than three minutes. If you have more than three minutes worth of material to deliver to us. Take your three minutes tonight in oral testimony and, and, and send, send the whole thing to us in written testimony via email. It'll be considered just the same way. We ask that you state your name and address, uh, or neighborhood, or if, if you're one of the property owners, your affiliation, that would be great. Tech team, if you can bring up Kevin Rogers, please. Kevin, just unmute yourself, state your name and affiliation, go right ahead.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Good. Uh, thanks for allowing us to participate again. Uh, Councilman Sesma, I'd just like to let you know that, um. This is not a project that could or should take ten years to implement. This is ready to occur tomorrow. Um, we have. Received more, uh, interest in, from the demand side of the development equation. Uh, then there is room to fit on a hundred acres. Um, so this is a project that could be implemented. Right away. And, um. You know, one of the things I was going to start with was to, to say to, to all of you, I mean, you know, goodness. This is probably, probably the, the, the last time that I would write a five or six or fourteen page, you know, message to all you guys, but. Um, which I'm sure you'd all be, um, pleased to hear, but you know, watching all of you wrestle with this stuff. Wrestle with, you know, very real world market, you know, driven demand questions. Goes to the heart of our, of our, of our plead, which is that we're simply, we have simply asked to be included. In the crafting of this master plan document, all, all, all that we have done, all that we have been invited to do so far to this date. Just like any other member of the public is ask questions, participate in focus groups where we asked further questions. just like any other member of the public is ask questions, participate in focus groups where we ask further questions, submit pleadings to the public record and, and allocate, use our three minutes at a public hearing. We, we want to be involved in crafting this master plan to create something that we can get started on immediately. It's what we have heard from neighbors and ourselves. You guys have covered a lot of interesting ground here this evening. You know, a lot of it's not supported by demand from the marketplace. But some tweaks, if we were just included, some tweaks with a collaborative conversation could resolve this. Otherwise unsupported by the marketplace, the absolute last thing we want to do is the very thing JCPenney told you in writing, which is that they see no, no future in the master plan as written. And they simply want to lease their store. Lacking any further collaboration with us, we very well will probably have to lease our store under the current zoning. And I can't understand what harm there is and including the owners in crafting this. You know, more pointedly, I mean, the, the conversation about housing and, and how much goes over here and how much goes over there, completely excluded from the conversation earlier was, was wrapping, wrapping the commercial with residential uses, which is what the plan said it wanted.
Kevin, thank you. Thank you very much. Again, please submit anything you'd like, including the tweaks that you're referring to. We are glad to consider all of it. Tech team, if you can bring up Bob Dalrymple, please. Bob, just unmute yourself, state your name and affiliation, go right ahead.
Sure. Good evening. Bob Dalrymple, Attorney with Selzner Gervich. I'm laying his counsel to WRS. And as I communicated to you last week, I've been brought in to really explore the plan B. What can WRS do with this failed mall in the event that a redevelopment plan can't emerge at this, at this point in time? You know, I spoke in general terms last week, and I want to get a little bit more specific here tonight. We've heard a lot about staff wanting to do a plan that's bold, it's epic. My concern is that there really hasn't been a bona fide effort to, to arrive upon a plan that can be implemented and is financeable. I don't think a plan can be epic if it can't be implemented. This is 103 acres. It's a defined area. It has, you know, eight parcels, five owners and a failed mall on it. This is a redevelopment scenario. This is a redevelopment, this needs a redevelopment plan, not a master plan. That's my bold and epic statement to you here tonight. What would be bold and epic is if everybody recognized that there have been a lot of good, fresh ideas that have been, that have emerged so far through this, this, this effort and this process. Pause it. Do not approve it as a master plan. Let's get this back into a redevelopment plan mode and see if we can implement these ideas and tweak them and have that be a more flexible tool moving forward. As conditions change, it's a hell of a lot easier to change a redevelopment plan than it is to change a master plan. Mayor, you even introduced this tonight as a work session on the Lake Forest Mall property. It shouldn't be a master plan. It should be a development plan. Let's get back to the negotiating table and get a development agreement in place. The development agreement that was put in place did not get executed. We had a pandemic. Yeah, no kidding. Didn't get implemented. Let's give it a real bona fide effort. Again, you've got a lot of good ideas that staff has put forward. Let's make it into a plan that can actually be implemented. And it has the flexibility that we're going to need moving forward. I mean, if it, if it helps to do a, you know, a weekend session that involves staff and, and, you know, members of the, the public and the developer, you know, fine, whatever it's going to take. But we really do need to get this back into the mode of a redevelopment plan and get it out of the master plan scenario. I really think it's a huge mistake to be doing it. I think it's been a useful process thus far. Let's make it a really useful process. Thank you.
Thank you. Tech team, if you could bring up David Bellegarde, please. David, just unmute yourself, state your name and address or neighborhood, go ahead.
Hi, Dave Bellegarde from Washington Tony Woods. I'd like to start off with, I really enjoyed reading the master plan as, as it has been evolving. And this specific meeting has been a little bit disappointing for me based upon all those good experiences before. And really that is because I feel that this has gotten a little bit away from the spirit of what we're trying to achieve. We want a site that provides the future of Gathersburg, both with housing and jobs and provides something that could be transformational for many, many, many years. Here we are, we're talking about parsing off percentages of acreage for commercial and residential and all this. The master plan focused on the idea that residential would be on top of commercial a lot of places. And truthfully, I don't know if we should be saying it should be 35 acres for commercial and this, that. I think that we should be focusing on what we want. And what we want is to have at least a certain square footage of commercial overall the site. And what we want is to have at least a certain number of units of residential and perhaps a certain number of units that house at least a certain number of residents. I don't think that we should make a cap on that. But I do think that we should put in guides for minimum square footage of commercial, minimum square footage of residential, minimum number of units for residential. And then I think we should let the developers work with their profit motive. Their profit motive drives them to do what's best for them, but we make them do it within the guidelines that we've set and make those guidelines focused on achieving our goals, which once again is a site that provides housing and jobs for Gathersburg. I think we've gotten a little bit too wrapped up in how we prescribe that solution. That's it. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Next, tech team, could you bring up Gary Unterberg, please? Gary, just unmute yourself, state your name and affiliation, go right ahead.
Good evening. Gary Unterberg with Rogers Consulting, working with WRS. And last week I spoke regarding the stormwater management ponds and the need for flexibility with special conditions. And I'd like to continue those thoughts a little bit more tonight because primarily the, the ask is that the special conditions not be binding. We use stormwater management as an example. Heard a lot of design or a lot of discussion tonight about creativity, bold, et cetera. And unfortunately, stormwater management is status quo. It's assumed that eight acres of the one pond be left. There are different ways to accommodate stormwater management, particularly this redevelopment criteria. There's also different ways that in the future, as the ordinances change and so forth, that the, the site could be better accommodated environmentally than, than old wet ponds. And the other thing I've heard tonight too, that it's complicated. That's been mentioned a number of times and the stormwater ponds are just one of those examples. It is complicated because the one pond does take offsite drainage, but also there's no existing easement or agreements known to share that pond with others. The complications are, there's also a regulate, regulated waterway that travels through the site. It crosses four different properties, three different property owners. But again, that brings in the state with MDE and also the federal government with the Army Corps of Engineers. And they may, depending what redevelopment court occurs and how we work with future stormwater regulations and creative designs, they may ask us to do something different than what, that is within that special condition. So I'd like to, or the point I'd like to make and the challenge to the city is if there's a better way, a more creative way, a greater plan, a different way of doing something that's not in line with the special conditions, how can that be accommodated and how can that flexibility be built in? Because particularly with the stormwater ponds, there's opportunities to think outside the box, be more creative than just to leave those ponds in place. And again, we will be working with our partners, with the state and the federal government in addition to the city and the regulations that the city has. So again, just to make the point, there are different ways to do some of these things and challenge the city how to build in the opportunity or the flexibility to accommodate better plans as we go forward versus waiting 10 years to revisit a master plan. Thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gary. Tech team, let's bring up Donald Fagan, please. I'm not Donald David. See, I, I see Fagan and I'm thinking Steely Dan, Donald Fagan. No, it's David Fagan. Sorry about that, David. Please state your name, address or affiliation. Go right ahead.
I'm a, I'm a big fan of Steely Dan also. My name is, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for holding this hearing to receive comments on the potential use of Lake Forest Mall. My name is David Fagan. I am the Economic Development Chair of the Montgomery County Branch of the NAACP and I'm submitting this testimony on behalf of the branch. For over 100 years, the NAACP has been in the forefront of securing justice, equity and civil rights for all. Here in Montgomery County, the NAACP has been in existence since 1937, when African American residents sued to obtain equal pay for African American teachers who worked in the public schools. We recognize then, as we recognize now, that economic equity and opportunity play a vital role in securing a just society. We appear today to urge you to consider the ongoing need for the construction of a venue space sufficient to accommodate large events with an occupancy of 5,000 guests for events and conferences in Montgomery County, Maryland. Currently, most county high schools hold graduations and proms outside of the county due to the inability of current venues to accommodate these events. Many groups in the nonprofit sector, including religious and faith-based institutions, hold large events beyond county borders due to the lack of a facility that can serve a large enough audience. Additionally, additionally, the county foregoes possible revenue from the private sector and the federal government agencies that cannot consider the county as a location for conferences or other gatherings because of this lack of an appropriate venue. An appropriate venue for large events would not only produce revenue, it would also increase convenience for the Montgomery County residents and make the county a travel destination for people throughout the region. Such an entertainment conference venue in this part of the county would not only present an economic development opportunity, but would also permit equity and access to accommodations that is lacking in this part of the county. Therefore, as part of the development of this site, we urge the consideration of the construction of a venue that would meet the county's needs for event meeting and conference space, which would, which could accommodate graduations, weddings and other events that currently seek and utilize facilities outside of the county. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Montgomery County NAACP appreciates your consideration of this request and looks forward to working with you. I am happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much, David. Tech team, if you could bring up Lisa Henderson, please. And Lisa, just unmute yourself, state your name, address or affiliation, go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Henderson and I live in the border community in Gathersburg. I am a lifelong resident of Montgomery County and a 25-year veteran of the city of Gathersburg. And I appreciate what I saw and heard today. As a child and, and any of you who've been around long enough will remember that Lake Forest Mall used to be a place I went, where I went ice skating with friends, where we went to the movie theater. And I appreciate that the care that's being taken to bring that vitality back to this, this space, this place that's been a landmark and a staple for so many, for so long. I also appreciate the, the gap housing that will provide an opportunity for those who currently live on the east side of Gathersburg, an opportunity to, for home, for a path for homeownership. I, and additionally, the way that the plan is built and designed gives a look and feel for a community where people can both live and work in Gathersburg where I, I, from people where, that I talked to, I know it's a place in Gathersburg where people want to both live and work. And the plan seems to, to promote that. So I, I ask that, that this plan be recognized for those things and be pushed forward to, to promote the gap housing for people to advance and be successful in their lives and also to be able to live and work within the city of Gathersburg. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Do we have any other speakers from the public? Looking for hands again, if you, if you'd like to speak, just use the Zoom raise hand feature. Not seeing any. Okay. So I want to, I want to just address, I just want to make clear to anybody watching the comments from Mr. Kevin Rogers from WRS about inclusion of the, of one of the property owners in this process. And I'm just going to sort of paraphrase from an email that, that I wrote to him last week that I do understand where, where he's coming from. And having thought about this, I'm satisfied entirely that the opportunities to provide input from WRS and from the other property owners have been fair and plentiful and their input has and continues to be considered in good faith. Kevin mentioned that he's got some tweaks that he'd like considered, and I can guarantee we'd like to consider them and he should, you should share them with our staff who will take his calls and be glad to, to continue to interface with him and the other, the other property owners. But I want to make clear to the public, a master plan update is a lot, is quite different from a development application. A development application, we have, we have an applicant who wants to do something and they are at the table because essentially it's their job to present their plan and defend it and, and discuss, you know, be responsive to the public who we represent when we're either voting up or down on it. A master plan is a public document whose goal is to lay out guidance on behalf of the public for the future harmonious development of a study area. This guidance will impact how on behalf of the public, we as a council and our planning commission will evaluate development applications in the future. The input and interests of the current property owners are carefully considered, but their perspectives by nature are narrow and driven by motives that may or may not be aligned by, aligned with the general public interest. So we, when we have master plan discussions currently and when in, in the past, we don't have property owners at the table during final discussions of master plans. They, they are certainly willing, we are certainly willing to discuss, hear their input and consider it, but it's our job. We're, this is a public document. We're representing the public. That's, it's our work product essentially. And so we're, we're the ones accountable for it. So that's where we are. And I wanted to just to, for Rob Robinson, I wanted to give you a chance to respond to the NAACP comment from David Fagan about the performance venue. How would, how would this master plan impact a private entity who wanted to develop such a venue?
It doesn't, as we've discussed multiple times, because we hear this often. Some people want arenas, some people want venues, some people want museums. These all fall under the civic uses that are discussed in the master plan. And while we encourage, you know, at least one, if not multiple, one of these buildings, we're not going to weigh in on the merits of one over the other. We do discuss. You know that they, they can be integrated, they can be integrated mixed use vertically, as was discussed sort of this evening. We should help explore, you know, potential P3 opportunities. And again, when we talk about, you know, P3, it doesn't necessarily mean the city, it could be other governmental entities in the funding and operation of these, or trying to put partner stakeholder groups together to make something like this happen. I think a venue would be a great idea, as I think many other civic uses would be great ideas. And that's why sort of the master plan is not going to choose sides sort of on which is the highest and best civic use for this site.
Thank you, Rob. And, and to Gary Unterberg's point about creative ways to deal with the stormwater ponds, do you have any, any feedback now or do you want to get back?
Again, stormwater is required by law. You know, this is redevelopment. There's lots of impervious surface. They're going to be responsible using environmental site design to treat 50%. As with other sites, you know, we allow ponds in there. I don't believe the, the special conditions contrive because we're not saying where they have to go. As the discussion tonight was, it's setting cap. So these can be, these caps can be cited and developed around whatever happens with stormwater management. Stormwater management can be incorporated into the green area strategies overall. So again, once the plans come in, that's when we review. So again, once the plans come in, that's when we review, you know, the stormwater plans.
Thank you, Rob. So I feel like there were, there were a few points where you needed guidance, and you've gotten guidance this evening. Do you feel guided?
Yes, and on behalf of staff, I am very appreciative, both of council and the planning commission, what we accomplished literally in a space of eight days to get clear guidance on how to amend a master plan that we're really hoping to have edited, you know, within the next two weeks to be able to have hit the streets before the planning commission record closes and still maintain our aggressive timeline of having this adopted, you know, on the 16th. That only comes through because of the seriousness both your bodies took for this and really talked things through and provided us. So again, we thank you on that standpoint.
Well, we have sort of a mutual admiration going on because staff did a wonderful, wonderful job in putting all this together, particularly putting this last slide deck together over this last week. You guys did a great job. Any final comments or questions before we adjourn here? Looking for raised hands, not seeing any raised hands? Okay, well then I think our, our business is done for the evening. We, we have essentially provided the guidance that staff is looking for. Thank you, planning commissioners. And I will note that the next regular, the next regular meeting of the mayor and council is next week, Monday, June 21st. And until next time, let's do great things, Gathersburg, and happy Father's Day. We are adjourned.